All right, I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It's May 26, 2021, and we will begin with our public statement. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people, regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC. And with that, I will note that all three commissioners are present for this meeting. And our first agenda item will be department updates. And we will begin with Ms. Cottle from the Health Department. Good morning.
Good morning. I don't have a lot to share with you today, but some things that I think are good news and just some, some updates about vaccinations. We are again in a blue advisory this week. That's the third week in a row, so we are pleased about that. With, with all of that and the change in regulations, I still want to be very clear that we still have a need for masks and physical distancing in certain circumstances. So no mandate for that does not mean that masks are never required. So look at the CDC guidance, and that's what we've really made those changes based on. If you are fully vaccinated, and that means you are post, it's been two weeks since you completed your vaccine series. You got J and J vaccine two weeks after that first shot. If you got Pfizer or Moderna, two weeks after that second dose of vaccine, you are considered fully vaccinated. If you have been fully vaccinated, then the only time that you really need to wear a mask is when it is required. So if you are in a building or a facility, a business that requires that you do that, then that's when you would need to wear it, or if your immune system is compromised. Or maybe you're doing it because a family member has a compromised immune system. Or maybe you're doing it because you just aren't quite comfortable enough yourself to let go of that mask. And that is okay. Want to say that. That is okay. So if you are fully vaccinated, there are only a few times that you need to wear that mask unless you just want to do it. If you are not fully vaccinated, then you still need to wear that mask in places that require it. But you also need to be wearing it at all of the other times that we've been talking about. So when you are out in public and you are in large crowds, when you're indoors in public spaces, you need to have a mask on, whether it's required or not, for your safety and the safety of those around you. So want to be really clear, lifting a mandate does not mean that what should happen has changed. There is still guidance out there. We want people to follow the CDC guidance. But understand that there are places that will require you to wear a mask. And that is certainly within their, their right to do so. There are places that are still expected, schools, and summer guidances out for schools does still require masks, even though there are times that they may not have to wear them. So all of this is changing. It will continue to change as we move through this. So stay abreast with what's happening and what those changes are by visiting the CDC's website, the Indiana Department of Health website. We will update our website as well and try to share that information as frequently as we can. There are still plenty of opportunities to be vaccinated if you have not received your vaccine yet. IU, Simon Scott Assembly Hall is still open three days a week. They have appointments. They are waiting for you. You can make an appointment. You can walk in. We will get you taken care of so that you can join the rest of those who are enjoying that kind of newfound freedom of being fully vaccinated. We do have an outreach clinic this Saturday at Smithville Farmers Market from eight to 12. Walk-ins, no appointment necessary. That is Johnson and Johnson vaccine at that clinic. And so it's 18 and older. If you are there and you decide that, gee, I want to be vaccinated, but I'm not eligible for that vaccine, or you would prefer Moderna, or you would prefer Pfizer, then we can help you get an appointment somewhere else. There are lots of places. The state is adding pharmacies, adding providers' offices to the number of people who are able to give vaccinations. So there, the opportunities are growing. So just kind of look around a little bit. And that dashboard is still up with the vaccine map as well. I wanted to give you just a few numbers. We know that the vaccine is working because of the fewer deaths, the fewer hospitalizations. And so I wanted to share just a little bit of information. As of yesterday, over 47% of our eligible population in Monroe County was fully vaccinated. When you break that down kind of by zip codes, and this is something that's on that dashboard now as well. And I want to preface this, that not every single Monroe County zip code is on that map. So it's kind of the, the more common ones that we think about. But we, we are internally looking at it by zip, by all of those zip codes. But 41.5% to 59.7%, if you break it down into zip codes. So we have as little as 41.5% in some areas that are fully vaccinated, and as much as 59.7% in other places. So when you break it down overall, we are at, I think it's 47.1% or something like that. It's a little bit over 47%. When we look at our 51% of our eligible population has a first dose, and you look at that by zip codes, it ranges from 44.5% to 63.7%. So I challenge you, make your zip code the top vaccination area. Go get your vaccine, make the appointment, find a walk-in, go get that done. Let's make a little contest by zip code. Can we, can we do that? That, that I think is a good way to challenge your neighbor and your family to go get that vaccine. Help folks get an appointment if they need it. Help them get to a vaccination site if they need that help. So those are my main things. The other thing that I would say in terms of vaccine working, 99.2% of our cases in Indiana since January have been in those who are unvaccinated. 99.6% of our hospitalizations have been in those unvaccinated. Those, to me, are big numbers, and they should tell you that the vaccine does work, and it is working. So please schedule that, that appointment, or make arrangements to go to a walk-in and get that vaccine as soon as you possibly can.
Great. That's awesome. Thank you so much. I love the idea of a contest.
We don't have a million dollars, but you know, we can make it a challenge nonetheless.
Um, let's see if there are comments or questions. Commissioner Jones?
I'm just really, really excited that things are getting to where they are now. Even though we're not completely out of the woods, it sure feels good to be able to get out and about if you've gotten both of your vaccines. So I highly recommend it.
Yeah, great point. Commissioner Giffens?
A friend of mine invited people over to her backyard, but only people who were fully vaccinated were allowed to come. And so there's, there are other incentives out there, but yeah, it feels good.
For sure. Excellent. Thank you so much, Ms. Cottle. We appreciate the update and your, the work of your department and the Board of Health, Dr. Sharp. And it's been more than a year, and it feels like 10, but it's been more than a year. So thank you so much for all that.
Thank you.
And next we have Ms. Moore from Emergency Management. Good morning.
Good morning. It's the last Wednesday in May. So I bring you our last helpful hint for Electrical Safety Month. And next week, we'll have a new topic. We actually are going to have two new topics because there's two things that happen in June. So I know the suspense will probably be very alarming for this week, but stand by for that. Our two topics that we have for May is to ensure that your exhaust fans are in proper order and cleaned before you plug those in, especially things like fans and window air conditioners. And then also, if you have an outdoor, if you have central air, it's encouraged for you to make sure that your outdoor central air unit is cleaned. Make sure that if you have weeds or debris that has grown up over time, that you clean those out, cut those weeds back, and make sure that they're sprayed off and cleaned before you, in fact, have that central air unit turned on. If that's something that you already have on and did not do that before this warmer weather has hit, we encourage you to switch off that switch and make sure that you cleaned that unit properly. And then, of course, turn it back on for safety. Those are our helpful May hints. We do have a couple rainy days, and then we're going to have a cold front. So it might be a great time for you to get that air conditioner cleaned out. You probably won't need the air on Friday because we do have a cold front kind of moving in that's going to lower those temperatures. And then we're going to have a great weekend, I think, over the weekend with some wonderful weather. So enjoy that with family and friends if you can. And of course, help those individuals to get vaccinated while you're doing that and enjoy that weather. We have a blood drive scheduled for May 27th. That's our last May drive. It's from the times of 2:00 to 7:00. And then we have two drives scheduled in June. They are June 28th and 29th. So that gives you almost the entire month of May, or of June, to get signed up for those drives. I encourage you to hop to the redcross.org website and make that appointment time. We did get our results back for April, and it was another super successful drive. I, every time I get those results, I'm eager to read them. And we have had nothing but success, and it's wonderful to be a part of that. And the Convention Center to be a part of that, as well as the Red Cross. And so, and it takes these community people and the partnerships within and around our community that step up and make those donations. And so we appreciate those individuals as well. And that is all I have, other than I just would like to remind individuals as well that they haven't signed up for that Monroe Citizens Alert to do so. I know that sometimes people think, oh, you announce that every week, but I'm hoping that there might be someone that's listening that hasn't heard of this before, or it will just sink in. It's a free service that our community offers through the Board of Commissioners, and we are so grateful that they do. And it allows us to send any kind of weather-related event out, as well as health orders, and if we have any pop-up clinics and such in our area. And so it just is allowing individuals to know what's happening in our community. And you can receive those by a phone call, by an email, or by a text message, or by all three. And so we do have, you know, potential this spring for pop-up and into the early summer for pop-up weather events and tornadoes and such where, where we are. And so it's a very quick alert that happens automatically through the National Weather Service. So there is not a way for human error in those alerts. And so it's one of the very, very best services that you can have with the timing wise for weather events. And so I greatly encourage any individual that is a resident of Monroe County to get signed up for that free service. And that is all I have.
Great. Thank you so much. Ms. Moore, comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, not really.
Commissioner Giffens?
No, thanks for the updates.
Yes, appreciate it. I was in Morgan County for a while yesterday, and their vaccine pop-up clinic was actually sent out over the emergency alert system, which was a bit strange, but, but it's good. It's a good way to get the word out. I think our system's a bit better, a little less worrisome, but, but it's, it's a good system. And some of the boil orders show up there sometimes, depending on the water department. So it could be a really handy service to have, and it's not going to scare you when the text comes up on your phone while you're driving. All right. Yeah, so with that, we will move on to Ms. Ridge for an update on roads and highways and byways.
Good morning. We're finishing up the paving in the north part of the county, Anderson Road and Old 37 North. That was part of our community crossing projects that were awarded last fall. And then we are also, they will be striping the roads that qualify for the striping, Old 37 North, Corey Lane, and Ratliff Road next week. And to finish those projects up, we'll be getting our paver out to start doing some paver patching in general areas around the county. And just please watch for crews. I went down this morning. We had a chipper crew, I guess we'd call it brush crew, working in the roadway. So we just asked everybody to proceed through caution and watch for all the construction workers out there. You can also report any paving requests, patching requests, any type of hazard on our county website, and it'll go straight to our dispatcher, and then we'll put in a work order for that, for an investigation and the work to be done. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Great. Thank you so much, Ms. Ridge. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Go.
Commissioner Giffens?
I really appreciate that, that you're looking out for the safety of, of the employees. That's fabulous. Thank you.
Yeah, it's so important to, I mean, there's so much construction going on, major roadways. But these patching crews move around a lot and brush crews. And so, yeah, just always proceed with caution and keep an eye out for those folks. We want to make sure that they stay safe. So excellent. Thank you. Thank you for that update. We appreciate it. All right. Next, we were, we're looking for a update from the Township Trustees. And Ms. Purdy is going to actually provide that update for us because we received that information via email. Ms. Purdy?
Yeah, good morning. Let's see here. The, Ms. Uli has submitted a report regarding the use of the funds that has already been provided to the Township Trustees to assist our neighbors. And she is, they are, our trustees as a whole, are requesting an additional $25,000, and that would come from the money that was appropriated earlier this year by council. And just kind of as a breakdown to give you some information, they have dispersed at this point in time $92,826.01 to families in our community. And I wanted to let you know also that the households that have been helped in 2021 in Perry Township, 84, Bloomington Township, 44, Richland Township, 32, Van Buren, 4, and Washington, 3. So those are, that's a lot of households that have been assisted by you, the commissioners, and the council by providing these funds. And that's all I can give as far as an update is concerned at this time. So if you don't have any real questions.
We'll, we'll, we'll make, we'll make sure we have a really tough question for you. No, we won't. But any general comments or easy questions, softball questions? Commissioner Jones?
Just so pleased that we've been able to help out with this. And I think it's, it's made a big difference for a lot of families and something that I think we all feel really good about.
Yeah, absolutely. Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, when I, I saw those numbers, I was, I just felt like these are hundreds of families that have been able to stay in their homes. That includes, you know, we think of adults, but includes a lot of children too.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, great point. So the way this works is we typically provide money for the fund in advance. The program ends at the end of June this year. And then any leftover funds get returned back to county. So would somebody be willing to make a motion to provide an additional $25,000 to the Township Assistance Fund?
I move we provide an additional $25,000 to the Township Assistance Fund.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, and we'll, we'll have a, we'll make sure that this is on our agenda next week for ratification. Let's see if there's any public comments on this item. Just click on the raised hand button at the bottom of the screen. And I do not see any, but there'll be another opportunity next week to provide public comments. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the provision of $25,000 to the Township Assistance Fund?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Purdy. All right. Next up, we have Mr. Miller, Veterans Service Officer. And just wanted to get an update on anything you want to update us on, but also I wanted to ask about what the plans are around the county for Memorial Day.
Thank you, commissioners and department heads. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today. So I just want to let you know that in the last two weeks, I've been hitting the ground running, been working hard toward accreditation. I've got all the documentation together for two accreditations that I need and working toward a third, which will probably not be completed by August. So there's a bit of additional training that's required for that third accreditation. So I've gotten, I think, much to the surprise of my district service officer, really fast work in getting this paperwork and training taken care of. So that's part of the big exciting news. As far as veterans' Memorial Day events, as you probably already know, I, my family and I are going to be out of town. We're going on our first vacation in well over a year, and we'd already had this big plan. So Mary Elsman has graciously and kindly agreed to, without any prodding, in fact, she was just, she jumped right at the opportunity to fill in for me at two different events this coming weekend. She's going to go and work with the DFW for a service at Valhalla, I believe it's Memorial Gardens, and then at the county fairground for the afternoon Memorial Day service. So those are the two events that we're a part of. Want to thank Mary, who has been coming in regularly to meet with me to do training and spin up. And that's been just fantastic. So I couldn't be more grateful, pleased with this experience so far. Do any of you have any questions for me?
Can you tell us the times of the two events that you mentioned?
I will have to get back with you on that. Mary's coming in at 10.
If you post it in the chat, we will make sure to announce it at the end of, at the end of our meeting today, during our announcements. And I, I think I know what time, but I don't want to guess. So I don't want to make it confusing. Commissioner Jones?
No, I'm just glad that you're coming along so quickly and settling in so well. And it's wonderful that Mary has been able to help you out so much.
Thank you. It's been fantastic.
Yeah. Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, it's great to see you in the office. We're pleased to have you. But I have to say that part of the reason that Mary might be around some is that she had her camper kind of really destroyed, and so she's had to replace it, so.
Yeah, so she's gone to new one now. And so she's, I think, fully ready to go again.
Get on that retirement vacation time. Excellent. Well, it is, it is great to see you reporting from your office, and I hope, it sounds like you're settling well. I hope you're enjoying it so far, and we look forward to hearing more great things from you. And yeah, just drop that info in the chat, and we'll make sure to announce it at the end today.
Do, thank you so very much.
Thank you. Excellent. All right. Mr. Cockrell has an update. Good morning.
Morning. Here, there we go.
You are.
Yeah, I just want to let the commissioners and the public know that the auditor's office is receiving phone calls regarding landowner's right to file a remonstration petition, and this is in conjunction with the annexation announced by the city. I met with the auditor and her key staff earlier this week to review the statutes regarding the auditor's role in the remonstrance process. According to Indiana Code 364311.2, the annexation process requires the approval of the annexation ordinance by the city council and the issuance of the required notice before the auditor is allowed to release the State Board of Accounts-approved remonstrance forms. And then really, that means the auditor may not issue the remonstrance form prior to the date the notice is published, and they have to certify the date of issuance. Their auditor's office has duties once the remonstrance petitions are returned, which includes verifying the signatory as a Monroe County property owner in the annexation area and determining if a valid waiver of right of remonstrance is in place. Petitions are provided by the auditor to the city council, who must provide the documentation regarding the validity of waivers. And while due to volume, this annexation may propose some challenges. The, the auditor's office is working behind the scenes to make the potential process as smooth as possible. The auditor's office expects to have an informational guidance on the county website. And this should be available well in advance of the public hearing day, which is, I believe, scheduled for early August at this point. As you probably heard me say waiver of remonstration, or remonstrance a lot. If, if a property owner wants to know if there is a valid waiver filed for any property in Monroe County, they're encouraged to contact the Monroe County Recorder. Indiana Code 36922.2 has a lot of information on whether a waiver is valid or not. And it includes a statement that any waiver executed on or for, before July 1st, 2003, is void. There's also a lot of provisions about 15-year timeline for a waiver. I would encourage anyone who has any questions about that to look at that code section and see what applies to their waiver. But if someone wants to know when their waiver was recorded, they may reach out to the recorder by emailing. And that's the preferred method is their, their email address is recorder@co.munro.in.us. That is the preferred method. If, for some reason, somebody cannot email, they can reach the recorder by phone at 812-349-2520 between 8:00 AM and 4:00 PM. And I would note that, much like the auditor's side of this, there's a potential for a lot of requests. So please be patient with them and let them do a thorough job and get back to them in an appropriate amount of time.
Great. Thank you so much, Mr. Cockrell. And I seen Ms. Rice is also on our panel. I don't know if there's anything else she wanted to add.
Good morning. Yeah, I want to just make clear to the public that Monroe County is more than happy to provide public information through this process. Obviously, the county auditor has a role to play when the remonstrance petitions are filed. However, we are also the entity, as Jeff Cockrell just said, where waivers have been recorded. So I really want to encourage the public to reach out to Monroe County as a resource for public information. Obviously, the county government doesn't have a stake in the annexation process itself. You know, it's, it's individual properties that will be annexed by the city or that are being proposed to be annexed. But it's a complicated process, and so I would expect Monroe County, going forward, to be able to provide information to the public. And we're here as a resource. I actually was just on, talking with the council intern, Colby Wicker, who's also on this call, and we expect to be able to work with council and the commissioners to provide public information to residents of Monroe County who are currently county residents and who may, at some point, become a city resident if this annexation goes forward. So if you are listening to this call, if you have concerns, if you know-- if you know a neighbor who's in the annexation area and you wonder if there's a waiver, please do reach out to the recorder and let us provide you with the public information that is, that should be readily available to you.
Great. Thank you so much. And I appreciate both of you being here and offering information, and I know that we're going to be posting something on our website with, with a lot of the same information on it, hopefully, today. Let's see if my colleagues have comments or questions. Commissioner Jones?
As well, Ms. Rice and Mr. Cockrell pretty thoroughly explained this whole situation. But just because there does tend to be a lot of confusion between city and county governments, I'd like to emphasize that while it's the city that actually does the annexation, it is the county that will handle the remonstrances. So if you have any questions, as they said, please be in touch. We want to help you with as much information as we can.
Yeah, thank you. Commissioner Giffens?
Yes, the, the city has posted information on all of the properties that they've proposed in their annexation. So if people have questions about whether or not their property is inside the line or outside the line, they can check that information at the, at the city's website, and I encourage them to do that. When I looked at the lines, it was a little difficult for me to tell exactly where they were drawn at times, so.
Yeah, yeah. That's a good point. The city does have a list by section, though, so you can actually go in and see the list. You have to go to the FAQ page and go all the way to the bottom. It's, I'm sorry, the general page, and go all the way to the bottom, but there is an FAQ page linked at the top. So there's a lot of reading to do, and there's a lot of precise legal language that is used. But it's, it's a process that we want to ensure that residents are aware of and what the impacts may be on their property tax as well. All right, so, and I see that Technical Services has posted the link. Thank you for that. Great. Thank you both. Really appreciate the update and the fact that you're staying on top of it, and we'll get that information on our, on our main page on our website, hopefully, today. So, thank you. All right. Let's see if there's any other department head that wishes to make a comment or provide an update. I do not see any. So with that, we will move on to the public comment section of our meeting. Public comment section, this item is for information and issues that are not on our agenda. You will have three minutes to make your comment. At 2:30, you will hear a tone. And at that tone, that means you have 30 seconds left to complete your statements, to get your final thoughts out to the public. That same three minutes and that same tone will be used in our other agenda items for public comments, and it looks like we have two. The first, Mr. Alexander.
Hello. Thanks. My name is Greg Alexander. I came last week and spoke about the importance of the Monroe County Urbanizing Area Plan, which you guys have really put just a ton of effort into over the last about five years. And that's kind of an awkward thing for me to do, because I can't tell you, you know, why you made the decision you did two weeks ago about that development near Clear Creek. But I can just say that, to me, it looked like the Urbanizing Area Plan disagreed with, with your decision. But then, immediately after my comment, Margaret Clements, who is the president of the Monroe County Plan Commission, said that, if I understood her correctly, that we should completely scrap the Urbanizing Area Plan, because the city has made the decision to allow 15 duplexes per year to be constructed in core neighborhoods. And that's, that's astonishing to me. I mean, that's a really small change in the city. 15 units a year won't even, won't even show up on the radar, and it's just really important that people know, developers know, that citizens know, that the city government knows, if we're deciding this annexation question, you know, who is going to be better at maintaining this land around the city and, and regulating it? We need to know, is the Urbanizing Area Plan, are you guys really going to throw that out? And I just hope you guys would provide some, some clarity on that, that question, because that's such an important question. And to be honest, I'm just going to state my own opinion. If, if you guys are going to throw out a document that is so progressive, that is so valuable, that has consumed so many resources, both staff resources and financial resources, I, I don't think you guys should be running the urbanizing area. I, I think city government should annex that, because county government is dropping the ball. But if that's not your position, then I, I think we need some, some clarity on, on whether or not Margaret Clements' position as, as president of the Plan Commission is, is appropriate, given what seems to me like an extraordinarily radical view. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. It looks like we have a question, a question maybe, or comment from Mr. Askins of New Square Beacon.
Good morning, Commissioners. Can you hear me okay?
Sure can. Good morning.
Thank you so much. I don't have a question today. I'm sorry. I do, I do have a comment about the county's master calendar of government meetings. It's fantastic, and I want to tell you exactly why it's fantastic. It not only has all the events, if you look at the calendar, at the top of it, it says, "Download these events." Well, it's true, that link will download the events in a file to your hard drive. But the really fantastic thing is that if you take that link, that that "Download these events" phrases is linked to, if you take that URL and you dump it into your Google Calendar and you add a new calendar using the "from URL" feature, you get all the events at the county dumped into your own personal calendar once and forever. You do that one time, and all the events that are on your calendar show up in someone's personal calendar. And that's a fantastic thing, because you never have to visit this web, sorry, this webpage on the county's website ever again, just to find out when meetings are happening. They're already in your personal calendar. But wait, there's more. The really fantastic thing about the way the, I think it must be the IT department that has done this, has organized the event descriptions, they now include not just the Zoom links, but also the links to the PDF files that support each individual meeting. So for today's meeting, for the Board of Commissioners, your meeting, I can get the Agenda and Packet. I can get the Township Report. I can get the CARES spreadsheet. It's all stuffed right into the event description, which means if I add the feed to my personal calendar, I not only get the dates and times and the names of the organizations that are having the meetings, I get right there in my personal calendar all of the supporting documents as well. And that is exactly the way every government entity, I think, should organize their calendars. Monroe County is already doing it. And I hope that, that Monroe County will continue to do this. And the point of my comment this morning is to just make you aware of these two aspects of how fantastic the calendar is, so that you can make sure that the people who are making that happen continue to make it happen, and that maybe you can say thank you to them. Thanks a bunch.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Askins. No, that's a, that's an excellent point. Appreciate that. And many thanks to our TSD Department and all our boards and commissions, and Dean Adwater Myers in our office, who does a lot of this calendaring as well, especially for our boards and commissions. It's great. It's, it's exactly how we need to function, and, and one of the things I was going to say at the end of the meeting, but I'll say it now since it's relevant, is that we are going to, if the governor's order, order on health, emergency order lapses in May, at the end of May, which is Monday, what we'll see is both a Zoom link and a room, a physical room space, provided on our county calendar for residents, so you can attend either. Next up, we have Ms. Clements. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I would also like to echo what Mr. Askins just said, that the transparency that we take pride in, in the county of providing seven days advanced notification of meetings with full packets of information that the constituents can respond to, that I think you, you are performing at a model rate that perhaps other organizations of government close to us could learn from. And I would also like to take a moment to respond to Mr. Alexander. Now, the city has openly stated that they will, they are not following their comprehensive plan. Of course, there was a lot of community dispute, and, and there were 700 signatures collected on one petition that requested that they not upzone the core neighborhoods, and 590 signatures on another, asking them not to pass the UDO. And in a time period where the citizenry and the county are uncollaborated with by municipal entity, I think it draws into question very significant and underlying former agreements. We in the county are being elbowed by the city and their refusal to follow their comprehensive plan. And I, I take issue with the full court press on trying to have city people further the agenda of densification and urbanization in a rural area that, in which the citizens and the residents themselves have said they do not really want to be urbanized. And so I think that we need to listen to our constituents, and we have to pay attention to what our community members say, and also, you know, we, we can't be susceptible to just to external political pressures that seem to be rampant in this community and that Mr. Alexander himself represents. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Clements. All right. Let's see if there's anyone else that wishes to offer a public comment on an item not on our agenda. Just raise a hand at the bottom of the screen. I do not see any. And we will move on then to item five, please.
Move approval of the minutes for May 19th, 2021.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments, corrections? Okay. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on approval of minutes for May 19th, 2021?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Great. Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move approval of the claim stock accounts payable, May 26, 2021.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we have Mr. Miller. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. The total was, for claims, was $8,655,617.57. I do want to add that approximately 86% of that, or $7,463,301.55, were for various fund-to-fund transfers, which brings the more realistic total down to $1,192,316.21 for claims. There were two notable items, starting with Endot in the amount of $809,695 for the sample road Phase II construction match, as well as $64,638 for Lao, for our software service for our property tax and financial program for quarter three and quarter four, 2021.
Great. Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, when I saw that total at the bottom, I kind of gasped initially until I realized that it really was just transfers.
I'll freak out. Okay. Yeah, that's funny. It's, it's an alarming number. You're right. It is an alarming number. And let's see if there is any public comment on this item. Just raise your hand at the, click on the raised hand button at the bottom of the screen. I do not see any. So with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the approval of claim socket accounts payable, May 26, 2021?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I will note that we have received a report from Ways and Measures, and the report covers the time period of April 16th to May 15th, 2021. And with that, we will move on to new business.
Approve ratification of an MOU with Mid-America Health for dental services. Fun name, medical services, fun number 1,000-34100-0380, in the amount of $2,200 per day.
Second.
Great. We have a motion, and we have a second, and we have Andrew Crowe here. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for having me this morning. Again, just trying to, to better our services, our dental services with the inmate population. The current provider we have is taking up to 10 weeks between visits, and I think that's just too long for someone that has some dental issues. Currently, we've got 25, 26-plus inmates that need dental services. But I think the time, the faster we can get this started, the better off the inmates will be, the better coverage they'll get.
Thank you so much. Mr. Cockrell, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I was just going to note that that $2,200 per day is not calendar day. It's days. They are actually at the facility doing the work. So it's, and I think when we discussed this last, is that we were hoping to get two in rather quickly and then go on a month, once a month, or once every three weeks after that. So that is not $2,200 per calendar day. It is $2,200 per day of service.
Great. Thank you for that clarification. And comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Just really pleased that we're able to offer this service in the jail. Many people have never seen a dentist at all, and this is really a good opportunity for them. And I also definitely agree that 10 weeks is a little too long to wait between appointments if you have some problem going on. Thank you for looking into this and bringing it to our attention.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, several things. First of all, we know preventive dentistry costs us a lot less, but I think you also explained to us that this is not going to be, this is just a shift in the dollars that we're spending. It's not that we're adding a huge amount to the budget or anything like that. And I, like Commissioner Jones, I really appreciate the fact that you've gone out and found a better solution to what's going on.
Yes, that is correct. The previous dentist, or our current dentist, charges so much per visit, per inmate. This company charges a flat rate per day, and I think they'll be able to hopefully see more inmates than, than their, than our current dentist was seeing, which should equal out the cost per day. And still with, you know, the current dentist having a 10-week waiting period, we're having to send inmates out to other dental facilities throughout the county. The more we can do in-house, the better off we all are. It prevents chance of escape, injury outside, contraband coming into the jail. So I think it's a win-win for everybody.
Yeah, absolutely. Yep. And, and I echo my colleague's sentiment that, that it's great that you took the initiative to chase this down. So it's a great thing. So appreciate that. Let's see if there's any public comments on this item. Again, just click on the raised hand button at the bottom of your screen. And I do not see any. So with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the ratification of the MOU with Mid-America Health for Dental Services?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item, please.
Approve Schneider Geospatial Professional Services Agreement. Fund name: Reassessment. Fund number: 1224-34350-0000 in the amount of $20,520.
Second.
Great. We have a motion, and we have a second. Ms. Sharp, our assessor. I believe she's on the call.
I'm here.
There you are.
Yeah.
Good morning.
I don't know why I'm not on camera, but I'm here. Anyway, start my video again. I thought I did. Yes, ma'am. Good morning, Commissioners. It's always great to see you all. Beautiful rainy day, which we need, outside the courthouse. Gorgeous. This is, I spoke to you last week. This is a professional service agreement that I need your signatures on with Schneider G I S, who now hosts our G I S for the county. This is an added service that, for the next six months, that we're going to hopefully utilize, that will help everyone that has to use the G I S, myself, Auditor, and of course Jared, our new coordinator for G I S. Snyder will be, this is just going to be adding support to what they already do. It's called an augmentation, which is something that I think will be very, very beneficial to all of us, but especially Jared and Tron at the surveyor's office. And just to keep us going right now with transitions, with making sure that all of our G I S data is now going to be documented a little bit better. And they're just going to be at Jared's beck and call as needed for the next six months. I'm able to pick that charge up through the reassessment. I'm very grateful for that, that we can use it. We've always used the reassessment fund to partially fund G I S since 1992. I think it's a, it's something we must have. It's not a, it's nothing that we can just kind of play with every year. Nothing was more apparent than how important our G I S was during COVID. Everything is online for the customers through Elevate. The customers, of course, are our taxpayers, and all of us. We have to have this, and it cannot, it goes down for five minutes, and it's panics, especially in this office. This is our major tool. So I'm just asking you all to please approve this contract. And if you have any questions, be glad to answer anything I can.
Great. Thank you so much, Ms. Sharp. And comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
It sounds like this is really going to solve some serious problems that we've had. And I'm very pleased, I believe it was Jared who actually came up with this solution. Or no, okay, I'm sorry. Then thank you for coming up with this solution.
It was, Commissioner Jones, it was a collaboration between all of our offices. But this is just something that we don't do anything kind of by ourselves. But, you know, Jared is new, and I think he's so excited to work with people that can really make his job even easier. So he's got a rough job. He's got a hard job that we have to have, a really professional, trained person. And this is just going to help him maybe get to that higher level in his own profession. So thank you.
I'm just very pleased that you did come up with this solution, and it sounds like it's not only vitally important, but will be extremely helpful.
Yeah, great point. Commissioner Giffens? Oh, you're muted.
I'm pleased to vote yes for this, especially because it's not just for the assessor's office. There are so many, the planning office, others, all feed into this thing. And the amount of layering that's necessary is just incredible. So I appreciate you doing this.
Yeah, it's great to get this right. We appreciate that you've taken this on as part of reassessment. That's awesome as well. Much appreciated. And let's see if there's any public comments. Just click on the raise hand button at the bottom of the screen. I do not see any. So with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the Schneider Geospatial Professional Services Agreement?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Ms. Sharp. Appreciate you. All right.
Thank you.
Item, please.
Move to approve ordinance 2021-11, Fieldstone Plan Unit Outline Amendment Number Three, Parcel L.
Second.
Great. We have a motion, and we have a second. And we have Ms. Chriselius from the planning department here to give us the information we need on this item.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So this is the Fieldstone Plan Unit Outline Amendment Three, Parcel L. So this property is located in the former fringe area that surrounds the city of Bloomington. It is currently zoned Fieldstone P U D, which is also known as, was originally known as part of the Wiley Farm area. This was a P U D that the Bloomington Plan Commission approved in October of 1994. The petition site, Parcel L, so it's located in Van Buren Township, Section Two, and it's 4.49 acres. So the petitioner is requesting a Plan Unit Outline Amendment to include the following uses that are defined by Chapter 802. So they're wanting to add in three uses: government facility, community center, and agricultural uses not animal-related to the list of approved uses for Parcel L. With this request, they're also proposing to define some design standards that were either silent or a little vague within the originally approved ordinance. The intent of this request is for the Van Buren Township trustee's office to be able to pursue the construction of a township office that would also be a community center and have a community garden. This petition site was previously amended in 2004 by Smith Design Group for a church that also added the use of a religious facility of property. So it has been reviewed before. So the parcel currently is undeveloped and vacant. It's a little more wooded. It has a, it's a meadow kind of understore shrub layer right now. This image, aerial imagery is a little outdated. It maintains frontage along West State Road 48, South Fieldstone Boulevard, and also West Stoneview Way. The access would be derived from Fieldstone Boulevard, which is a local road. There are two existing driveway cuts. They will, that will be reviewed if approved, and the petitioners move forward with the planned unit development. Proposal highway driveway cuts will be reviewed, and stormwater detention will be reviewed at that stage. There's no cars on the property. It is located within a critical watershed called Cave Creek. Stormwater detention was provided at the time when the P U D was created. So there's a regional detention basin. Again, all of that will be reviewed at the planned unit development stage if it's approved today. There are utility service lines, dual water, gas, electric. They were all stubbed in anticipation of the property being developed. So much of the Fieldstone P U D is approved for residential uses. There's dedicated open space along the flood plain. The development plan also had a dozen, has some areas with designated non-residential uses, which includes that Parcel L. Parcel L was intended for a commercial use and was termed a limited neighborhood business park. In a joining property called Parcel B, is for single-family or institutional uses. This is now the location of an assisted living. So on the left is the current uses that are allowed. So they were kind of coined as uses that would be neighborhood-serving, retail uses. This does now include a religious facility or monument. On the right are the three uses that the petitioner is requesting to be added. Some of the design standards that were vague in the original ordinance was landscaping. The petitioners are proposing to follow all of the requirements of Chapter 830, except for the landscaping buffer yard requirements. Most of the time, the areas that surround, the property boundaries are already somewhat buffered. So the only change they're really requesting is that the east and south buffer yards, that they're requesting that they're none. So that's the small change. The petitioners agreed to the streetscape requirements of Chapter 830, so there will be streetscape installed along West 48 approved. The other design standard that they clarified is parking. So they have went ahead and used the parking that will follow Chapter 806 of the current zoning ordinance for those three uses. So that's listed below, and it will be double-checked if the development plan is pursued. So this is the current site plan. Now, this is supposed to be conceptual. So if they move forward with, if approved, and they move forward with that development plan, you know, their plan might change a little bit, like the landscaping berm will end up having to be the streetscape that's required. So they'll refine their plan at that stage. But right now, this is supposed to kind of show that the elements of their, of their proposed construction can fit. Let's see. So the comprehensive plan, which would be the Monroe County Urbanizing Area Phase One, identifies this area as suburban residential. The, it is overall very compatible. The first bullet point, existing low-density, single-family subdivisions, that is kind of what the intent of this area is to be. But it does also, the following bullet points is compatible with the plan. It's to encourage interconnectivity through neighborhoods. It even goes on to state that private residential gardens and local community gardens are, should be encouraged. So that is compatible. This site has been vacant for quite some time. Makuah Face Two identifies this area as Gateway West, and the description for that was just intended to be a mixed-use development in Anfield. So the Plan Commission met on April 6, and they forwarded this petition to you with a positive recommendation and no conditions of a vote of eight to zero. And planning staff had also recommended a positive recommendation to the Plan Commission. So if approved today, the petitioner will be required to file for a planned unit development plan that would go through Monroe County staff review, including planning, highway, stormwater, et cetera. Does anybody have any questions?
All right, let's see if there are comments or questions. Commissioner Jones?
This is going to be a really nice thing for the residents of Van Buren. I'm particularly excited about all of the community gardens that are popping up everywhere. So much of Monroe County is very forested. There are many, many people who have no sunny place to grow anything. And this really gives a lot of people a wonderful opportunity. So I'd like to thank Ms. Barrow for including this in her plan.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Giffens?
Yes, when I was reviewing the whole application, I saw that they had put in a really a nice amount of parking. And given that they're putting in a community center, I'm very happy about that. It will make it much more useful and usable to the residents there. And I also appreciate the fact that it's on, in an area where I think it's more accessible to even more Van Buren residents. So I appreciate this move.
So really, I agree. It's a really good find for a piece of property. Let's go ahead and hear from Ms. Barrow and Mr. Cockram. I don't know who wishes to go first, speaking on behalf of the petitioner.
Rita, if you don't mind. Thank you, Commissioners. Chris Cockram here. And I was fortunate to work with Ms. Barrow on finding this location. We feel very lucky that we were able to find it, and I think it's going to be a great use of the property. But Rita, as you go through your comments, I know there were some questions that Commissioner Giffens had at the work session, which was, if you don't mind me asking, is to maybe expand on what your thoughts on the use of the community center, and then also what your thoughts are on what's going to happen to your current building that you guys built across from the fire station. So again, thank you, and I really hope that this is a positive approval, and I really appreciate your time. So Rita?
I'm sorry. I'm trying to get on here. Let me see if I can do the video too. Yeah. Okay, I appreciate everyone's efforts in doing this. This is something that Van Buren, I believe, needs. They need an area in which they can collaborate together, or collect together, I'm sorry, and be able to enjoy a facility that is built by the residents. Also, the community garden. I think this is going to be very good for individuals who don't have garden space, and will be able to have the fresh vegetables or fruits or whatever they grow. As far as questions, I know there are a lot of residents in that area that have questions concerning safety. Van Buren really looks at safety. In this current building that I'm in right now, that we chose to make as a temporary facility, we have door alarms, we have a security alarm that goes straight to my cellphone whenever someone even approaches the building as far as trying to open. We, we have got a lot of things in plan. I want to put cameras on the community building and the township building. So I'm hoping that this all goes through this way. As far as the current building that I'm in, it is connected to a home. Hopefully, once we get into the building and things kind of settle down to where we can focus on selling this property to individuals that are interested here as well. So that will also help us to maintain and continue growing on Fieldstone property. I've had good comments, and I've had bad comments that were either for or against the property. As far, I'm sorry, as far as this building, the township office, I want everyone to know that the clients that we have coming there are scheduled. They have a scheduled appointment. We only do one at a time, so I don't see any other way that we're going to have multiple people there unless it is for the community center. And again, like I said, we will make sure that everything is taken care of. There are certain rules and regulations that we will go through as far as anyone using the community building. So any questions? I'm open to.
Right. Thank you so much. Let's see if there's anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of this petition. We have one. Ms. Clemens?
Hi.
Hi. Hi again. I want to say that I lived in Van Buren Township for about fifteen years and what. Ms. Borrow has recommended trustee Borrow has recommended, I think, is going to be a huge asset to the Van Buren Township. And I can see all kinds of synergies for community, for community building, for integration between the mixed use development in the area urbanizing plan that I. Actually supported for this. For this particular proposal, the community center and then Fieldstone. I see a lot of synergies that could happen. Between those two developments because the trustee office would be right in the middle of that. And it would also provide an opportunity to integrate Cook and Ivy Tech into those community centers. And I just think it's a. A really remarkable proposal, and I think it's going to be a great service to the entire township. So. As I I want to express my support for this.
Right. Thank you so much. Is there anybody who wishes to speak in opposition to this petition? Just raise your hand at the bottom of the Zoom screen. It looks like we have Dawn. Good morning.
Good morning. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Fantastic. Thank you for allowing me to at least speak on behalf of the residents here in Fieldstone. Mainly on the west side with the buffer yard is that they're proposing. We have several residents who have expressed the concerns. And Rita had alluded to some of those, such as the safety and and security of the community building. However, the November twenty 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 meeting minutes are. Attached to this. However, the March twenty third and the April sixth meeting minutes are not. And that indicated a lot of the other concerns that the residents have. Such as the landscaping that's going to be on this west buffer yard to. Kind of separate this from people coming into our backyard and filtering into. What could be a safety and security issue for the residents that are on the side. The Exhibit Four Proposed Plan. Does show a sidewalk that kind of wraps around and we're more concerned about that as well. Especially those residents that have expensive items in a shed or a backyard. And then the community guarding garden also is really located close to the back of a couple residents backyards. And they're a little bit concerned about that with residents coming in from the outside of Fieldstone. And somehow jeopardizing the safety and security of those residents. So I know Rita had said and Chris as well that they were going to incorporate the residents. Mainly on this west side and the south side into the plan. That as they move forth with this proposed approved use. That we were going to have some kind of say in the way that the plan. Even just the way the parking spaces are facing are shining light into what is a very serene and quiet backyard. So I know that she said she was going to incorporate these residents. These residents don't feel like we've been incorporated so far, other than a couple emails. About when these meetings were occurring. And so I'm just speaking on behalf of several. As well as November twenty twenty meeting minutes say that the Fieldstone. In favor of this and nobody was on that meeting with the exception of myself who raised these concerns. So. As we move forth, if this is approved, we wish that all of our concerns be heard. Because we are turning this now into a commercial development. And has taken away the serene and quietness of this neighborhood. Thank you.
Right. Thank you so much. Let's see if there's anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition to this petition or has any general comments. Just raise your hand at the bottom of the Zoom screen. Does the petitioner want to respond to the concern?
Yes, as it stands right now, we haven't even designed the building or how for sure we're going to arrange this. Those proposals will go out once we're approved and when this happens. If we had a community building, we can all join in the community building and see all these. So listen. These are the types of things that I believe. That this neighborhood needs is somewhere to where they can join. I know that they have. They have buildings or not buildings. They're. I'm trying to think. They're like HMOs that they want to have meetings. They'll be able to have those. And be able to join together once we get that built and pandemic is gone to where we can. I am willing to work with the residents. I don't want to disturb anything that they currently have. What I want you to do is enhance it. So. Yes, we will be working close together with the residents. Before we ever put a shovel to the dirt. So.
Great. Thank you so much. Let's see if there's another round of comments or questions. Commissioner Jones?
No, not at this time. Commissioner Giffens?
I will say that when I went out to the Fire Department's fiftieth anniversary, I was the Van Buren Fire Department's. If you anniversary, I was very pleased with sort of the renovations that have been done out there and the expansion there. And so. I I guess I have a basis for trusting what will happen.
Yeah, that's a good point. Ms. Presilious, I wonder if you could go ahead and put back on the screen the list of the current. Approved uses back on that point that you gave us today, that presentation you gave us. Okay, so yeah, so. Just for residents of the area, I think. And really, we're we're just our question before us is just approving the change of use. For this property. It's it's not the specifics of. There's general information on landscaping, but it's not specifics on landscaping and design of the building and things like that. That will be. Addressed by the planning department, but I just want to point out that that. These are all the potential things that could go on that property as of right now and. While I do think having. Some commercial use is a good use here. I also think that this is a better use in terms of. The location and in terms of the way that it will hopefully unify the community around a space. And having that additional agricultural use is is excellent and excellent idea. So. These would be the kinds of things that could. Be be coming to. This area if this is not approved. So and nothing has happened yet. It's been a vacant space for quite a long time, which is which is fine. It's. I think that's actually fine as well, but if something's going to go in here, I think this is the among these, this the least. Disruptive and the most community forward option possible. And so that's why I'm going to support it. But thank you for putting that back up. Ms. Presilious, I appreciate that. Okay. So with that. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on Ordinance twenty twenty one dash eleven?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you. Thanks. Okay, next item, please.
Move to approve Ordinance twenty twenty one dash twenty five. Amending the opioid advisory commission.
Second?
We have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Cockrell?
Yes, this is a fairly simple and easy change. It basically changes the name of the. Commission to the Monroe County Substance Use Disorder Awareness Commission. I believe that this change is being requested in part to help them. Publicize what they do. Their previous acronym was a little unwieldy.
Great. Thank you so much. I will note that I think there's a title under membership and terms. Where you provide the. Acronym.
Okay.
Yes, minor, yeah, minor things. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Giffens?
No, but I would like to report that that commission is actively pursuing some publicity things, especially in the time of COVID. We've seen. We've seen things we'd rather not happen to people. And so it's an effort to reach out and to let people know that there are folks that are there for them.
That's, yeah, that's awesome. Yes, as hard as COVID has been on so many people, there's a. Sector of the community that kind of got a little bit forgotten in all this and and it's great. I appreciate that. Your service on that on that commission and all the other folks who serve. It's a wonderful thing. So thank you for that. Let's see if there's any comments or questions on this item. Just raise your hand at the bottom of the Zoom screen. I have to make my screen larger. I don't see any. So with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on Ordinance twenty twenty one dash twenty five?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move to approve Ordinance twenty twenty one dash twenty four to amend the no parking ordinance eighty six dash eleven.
Second?
We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Ridge, thanks for sticking around.
Good morning again. So this was a request from a resident that lives on Little Flock Lane. Little Flock Lane is off of Leonard Springs Road South, which is across the street to the city of Bloomington's. Little Nature Park that they have, the Leonard Spring Leonard Springs Park. There is not sufficient parking at the park that is provided for the. Persons that want to visit the park. We reached out after our traffic commission meeting in April. We tabled the request so we could reach out to the city of Bloomington Parks Department. To see if they were going to be adding any additional parking, see if they had received complaints and such. They have. And they do not have the means to provide additional parking. So we took it back to the Traffic Commission Board and presented our findings from that. And the board approved unanimously last week to enforce and install no parking signs on Little Flock Lane. Due to blocking the the persons that live in the subdivision, not being able to get. In and out of the subdivision. So again, it was approved unanimously last week by the Monroe County Traffic Commission Board.
Great. Thank you so much, Ms. Ridge. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Sounds like this was needed.
Commissioner Giffens?
I thank you for first taking it to the city to see if there are ways to work this out.
Yeah, yep, I appreciate that. And it's just an example of the. Work that the Traffic Commission does and our Highway Department to respond to residents' requests and. Concerns. So excellent work. Let's see if there's any comments or questions on this item. Just click on the raised hand feature on your screen. To let us know. And I do not see any. So with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on Ordinance twenty twenty one dash twenty four?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
All right. Thank you so much. All right. We have an appointment I think we're going to be making at the work session. So folks who are interested in that should stay tuned. I just have a couple of quick announcements just to verify Memorial Day ceremonies that will be taking place. Ten AM at Valhalla Memorial Gardens, two PM at Monroe County Fairgrounds. If you're interested in attending. On Memorial Day, county government offices will be closed on that day. We encourage you to remember those who made the ultimate sacrifice for the country. And. There is again going to be some information on annexation, hopefully. Today on our website or residents, so you can take a look at that. We are. Still encouraging residents who are dealing with. Income shortfalls due to COVID to contact their township trustee. If they need some assistance with basic necessities like rent and utilities. Again, that program runs through the end of June. But contact your township trustee. You could find a list at CO-monroe.us emergency management page. Or in any of our minutes packets of our packets which are produced each week. The full list of contact information is provided there. And just a reminder that if the governor's order. Is let to expire, allowed to expire. That we are meeting next week. Will be a. Will be a hybrid meeting at Nat U Hill and also. At on Zoom as always. So no matter what, you can find us on Zoom. But if the governor's order is allowed to lapse, then we will be holding hybrid meetings across Monroe County Government. Our next meeting is scheduled for June second and. As Mr. Askins recommends, check out the county calendar, CO-monroe.us. It's at the bottom of the page. You will find links for our Zoom meetings. And also if once we're back with hybrid meetings. That you will see the room number, the physical space where we will be meeting as well. And with that, my colleagues have anything else to add?
I wanted to say congratulations to the high school seniors that are graduating. Both, you know, RBB and MCCSC. It's been an incredible. Year and more that they've had to go through. And so I know that this has been very difficult. Today's the last day for the school year for MCCSC. Friday's the last day of school for the kids in RBB. And then graduation for both school districts is June the fifth. So congratulations to people that have persevered and made it through. And thank you to all the. The teachers and administrators and staff who've made it possible.
Yeah, that's that's wonderful. I appreciate that. That's a great thought. And yeah, congratulations to all the seniors. Best wishes on all your future endeavors. Excellent. Anything else? All right, seeing none, we will, what time? Commissioner Jones, what time do we want to come back for our work session?
If I could have until quarter till twelve, it would allow me to take care of a few things with my business.
Great. Excellent. We will be back at eleven forty five. We are adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Be well. We are adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Be well.